Hi, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome, everybody, to the Town of Appleton, April 2nd, 4:00, Change of Conferences, study session, City Council, and Park for Recreation. Thank you for all attending. Clark, go first.
Park for Recreation Commissioners, Timson?
Yes.
Crittenen?
Here.
Eisenberg?
Yeah.
Merrill? Oyster?
Here.
Roser?
Present.
Ramston? House Member Lewis?
Present.
House Member Winmer?
Yep.
Parker DeGolia?
Walking in the door.
There we.
Yeah.
I covered for you. Sorry. I saw you walking through the first meeting.
Somebody stopped at a corner up there. It was an accident, given the conversation.
Any public comments? Seeing no public comments, we'll move right on to the study session. Park Use Master Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Barry, Representative to the Council. The Parks and Recreation Commission has worked many long hours on the Park Master Plan, and you have the staff report this evening, and Steve Iler is here.
Speak.
Yes, if you want to speak to the staff report. Before we launch your presentation from the other.
Yeah, I'm sure that you've gone over the staff report. We prepared it with a basic chronology of from the time back in April when this master plan was thought to be a good idea, when we rolled it into place, the RFP process, all the processes that we've gone through for public involvement, survey, kind of on a day-by-day thing to catch you up, basically, to where we are today. I've got Mike Bellinger and Joy Long here, from DFS Architects, will be giving you a presentation of kind of the latest version of where we're at with the master plan as of today, at least the design plan, not the entire package that will have the park uses and all that stuff in it, just the basic where we're at with the park use master plan, and they're prepared to give that, and then work with this work group, you know, put some finishing touches on the process, where we are today. Any questions?
Turn it over to Great.
Before we start, should we kind of get in a better position so that we can do the powerpoint?
Absolutely.
But that could see.
I should.
Okay. He's not sweet.
I'll just stand in front of the.
Yes.
Typical.
Well, just a brief introduction. My name's Mike, and this is Joy. She's going to walk through the PowerPoint presentation, and appreciate your opportunity to come here and meet this afternoon, and take your time to talk about this. When we first kind of launched into this and started scoping it, working with George and Steve, and had heard some of the more lively history about the park in its more recent times with the library, the ball field, we were kind of anticipating a little bit more kind of, I don't know, say, energy coming from the community about ideas from the park. But, and so as we went through our public outreach and saw people in the park, we stayed the entire day, you know, talking to people, people are very excited, very happy with the park. They're very pleased with how it functions. Hardly heard anybody that ever made a complaint. So, with that said, you know, our process kind of went pretty smoothly. So, Joy's going to walk you through kind of some of the progression of the community input and some of the ideas. So, Joy.
Okay, thank you. These are the goals that we wanted to just go over with you again. The first one was to gather community input, and that is described in your staff report here. Secondly was site analysis, evaluating how your program is working currently, how the circulation is working, and what the future direction of the park is going to be. And then, once we got community input in the same way, then we would need to articulate what that future direction is.
Troy?
Okay. So, when we were gathering our community input, we did, our major way of collecting that input was an online survey, which we used Survey Monkey, and we collected over 130 responses over two and a half weeks. And the way that people found out about that is there was a link on the city website, there was an email to Appleton residents.
Okay, hands on.
We had posters in the park, and all of those were also announcing the fact that we were going to have a park tour. So, on a particular day, I think October 26th, we were here in the park with a number of stations, and it was actually the day that the Park for Life event was happening as well. And we've had surveys available for people to take then. I think we only had about seven surveys filled out on that particular day, but we did get a lot of feedback, comment cards in our boards about what people wanted to see in the park. I think we got about 80 people commenting on that particular day. We also wanted to reach out to the individual community groups, so we sent out a link to that individualized questionnaire, which we heard responses back from Little League, Appleton names, and preschool on those, and got specific feedback about how they were feeling about the space that they had, what they thought the future direction was, where the problems were, what they liked about the park, and that sort of thing. Then, once we collected that input, we continued with our site analysis, evaluating adjacencies of the program, how things were working next to each other, how pedestrians and vehicles were able to circulate throughout the park, and what the future of the park wants to be, not only from the community, but from, well, most of it was from the community, but in terms of how, what, how can we make this a better place to be, even though what we heard a lot of was, we like it how it is. So, from there, we developed three conceptual alternatives, which, there were several points that we had alternative development within that, and that, those three alternatives were reviewed by the Parks and Rec Commission, and then we developed a preferred alternative, which has gone through several iterations, and now we are here at the review today. So, those, the three things that are highlighted here, basically, we need to review it with City Council, and then go back, provide costs for all of these things, and then that will get incorporated into our final master plan. That's where we stand right now. So, for our facilities assessment and site analysis, we were really looking, again, at what the outdoor spaces and places were, not necessarily the individual buildings. When I say facilities, it's more everything except for the actual buildings themselves, because we know that those are under separate projects. Circulation and flow, how that is working, what is working well, what isn't working well, and like I said, adjacencies, and is there a logical layout, and perhaps things that could be improved there. So, we came out over a series of days and took site photos, looked at, you know, how is the park being maintained, how long has it been since things have been updated, that sort of thing. I know you can't actually see these that clearly, but we wanted to just show you that there were three conceptual alternatives that were developed in a scope of sort of least change to most change, because we felt like that was the range on which there was the most, the most logical way to lay it out. So, the first one being that, okay, if we did have a conceptual dog park, maybe we could easily put it in the north lawn, and maybe we wouldn't actually physically change the building uses or anything like that. That was concept one. Concept two looked at maybe a dog park in the area to the south of the back parking lot, and maybe if we did have an alternative use for the, if we did have an alternative use for the park residence, could that be a preschool potentially? So, that was kind of concept two. Concept three looked at a little bit more of what's happening with the event lawn, an event garden, and a potential dog park at the front of the park. So, we presented all these three ideas, and then came up with a preferred alternative on some Parks and Rec Commission looked at it. That's on the next slide. And what I tried to do with this graphic is instead of showing you the entire park with changes and all of the things that aren't changing, what we highlighted are just programmatically those items that would conceptually change. So, anything that fundamentally isn't different, and it's just, it's drawn in there, but it's not a item. So, what you see in green, ball field, and the event garden, those are conceptual designs that we were given and have just incorporated in, but they were not part of our master plan process. The orange or pink are basically those ideas that we were putting forward as good ideas to help the park move forward. And I, what I'm going to do is describe to you each, where each of those things came from, whether they were community-driven or other reasons. So, I'm just going to highlight those, and we'll just go to the next one. So, we really wanted to make sure that we addressed the 2005 master plan and the thought process that went into that. And so, what we've highlighted here are those elements that were already in that master plan. You have an alley to the north of the main house, right there, and additional hammerhead parking and drop-off for the main house there. There's also a more formalized entry for the pavilion. Instead of having the kind of half semi-circle parking, it's organized into a little bit more formal way there, which actually allows for more parking. In addition, we have an amphitheater in the low area there by the playground, and down by the courtyard, converting that road basically into a pathway, so narrowing that up and separating the path, basically separating the utility side of the courtyard from the carriage house. Okay, next slide. And Parks and Rec Commission probably remember seeing some of these photos. We wanted to kind of give you a concept of what that rain garden and amphitheater might look like. Obviously, it would have to go through construction detailing, but we thought that because you already have that natural bowl there, that there's an opportunity there to have space for outdoor events or anything, we wanted to use it for. In addition, there could be in that low area a rain garden, which would really celebrate the water in the landscape, rather than, right now, it's piped out to the drainage channel along the road there, and it really could be celebrated and planted in a really nice way. Okay. them, what would you like to see changed, the majority of items that we asked them about, they didn't want us to get a change. And so, the items that we did get were the potential for an off-leash dog area, and for updating the exercise stations around the park. So, those are the things that we highlighted there. And the other input that we got, which were not necessarily a majority, but I wanted to speak to those, were improved maintenance on a variety of things that wasn't predominantly one thing or another, refurbished the entry fountain, which is up at the north there, repaved the trails, which I understand is happening already anyway, improved facilities for events, improved the playground, the ball field, which is happening, and the bathrooms. So, those will be described in more detail in the master plan report, but I thought they were, we were just speaking to them briefly here. Okay. So, the off-leash dog area is the largest chunk that we really needed to discuss. It was a majority of respondents from the community did want to have that, and I should mention that it wasn't just because we had the survey, the park day, on the day of the Park for Life tour, because that actually was only seven actual surveys were filled out on that day. But out of the 130 responses that we got, we had more than half of the people wanted to have some form of policy on the area. So, the question was, where do we put it, and how do we make that work? And from our process, the preferred location for that is behind the north lawn in a space that is not really functionally used for anything right now. So, it's actually not displacing anyone, but better utilizing the space that's there. And from our research, we come up with a number of things that we thought should be incorporated. I did a review of all the dog parks in the region, and all of them are approximately a half to one acre in size. So, what you see here is approximately one acre as well. Fencing needs to be at least five feet high, some do six feet. That would have to be decided. Dog mitts, trash cans, wood benches, signage, and rules at the entrance, no places where the dogs could get stuck or entrapped. And then, from there, recommendations that we were given were, okay, if we're going to do surfacing in there, let's do 20% grass and decomposed granite, 80% of that. And this isn't to say that this has to be exactly this way, but because there are pros and cons to all surfaces, but from what we've seen, and also from the input that we got from Commission, this is the direction that we're looking at going. Separating the large and small dogs, so you see on the left, a large dog area, and on the right, a small dog area. The large dog area is about two-thirds of an acre, small dog area is about one-third. Also important being separate entrances and exits, so that dogs coming in and out don't meet head-to-head, and that there's a separate vestibule area for them, so if the gate does get open, there's another gate that will still be locked to prevent them from actually running out. This area will be great because it's, already has shade, and one of the things that would be up for discussion is how much clearing would actually have to happen in that area. What we've identified is areas of mulch that are the areas that are pretty heavily forested and wouldn't necessarily be conducive, grading-wise, to putting down decomposed granite because of the slope and the shade there. That would have to be detailed and studied in a more detailed way as this moves forward.
So, are you taking questions as we go, or you want to just?
Why don't we, let me just, I actually don't have that much more. Let me just finish, and then we'll get into discussion. We also didn't want to have lawn right at the entrance and access areas, because one of the big problems with lawn is that it gets worn out easily if it becomes a popular area. So, putting decomposed granite in those high traffic areas would tend to save the lawn. In addition, the gates not being right where all the dogs want to play because of the activity there. So, this is what the current plan looks like. On the next slide, we have a couple of views of what that fence, how big that fence might look. View one is looking kind of from the picnic tables back toward the backside there. That would be approximately a five-foot height. And then, view two is along the backside of where the cat is, and it might be a good idea to plant, we have enough room there, if the fence was behind that row of trees, we might have room to screen that additionally with some more planting. There are a number of fence options. We have a mirror that down to this is exactly what you should do, but fence option one is the gate, the fence that you currently have, and it's hard to see in this picture, but it's actually, it does have a mesh behind it. It would probably have to be modified to be five feet high, but that would be consistent with the park character. In terms of durability, it also might be of an idea to have metal fence posts. So, fence option two, it could look a little bit more like that, but with, instead of redwood posts, it could actually be metal, which would have a longer lifespan. So, that's something that would have to be decided. Okay, next slide. So, moving on to a few more items. Pedestrian circulation and access was, I would say, the predominant change that you would see, and that being, for example, along the entry road, a lot of times that is basically used as the pedestrian access right now. And for safety reasons and for comfort, being able to walk in the park, we have room to actually add a separate walk there. So, that seemed like a good idea. So, the entrance walk, and then basically, if you wanted to walk from the carriage house up to, even all the way out to Watkins Road, that there now would be a pedestrian-friendly way to do that, and to get all the way through the park. We also took out the seldom-used drop-off drive at the main house, and we did talk to fire, and that was not a problem. We also added access from the Felton Gables community. Right now, that's sort of a, because it's not defined, it's sort of dirt everywhere. So, we felt like that was a good idea. And then, if the, if this conversion from what it's being, well, it's not really being used for anything right now, but that park residence, if that was going to be converted to a new use, potentially for preschool use, connecting, addressing that pedestrian zone there as well. Okay. Then, in addition, there were some vehicular circulation issues we thought needed to be addressed, one being being able to turn around in the large parking lot. The opportunity, actually, I was talking about the one. Yeah, down here. The current trash enclosure is not really, well, there is no trash enclosure, the bins are all lined up there. There wouldn't be an opportunity there to create a trash enclosure in addition to enough backup space for a fire truck or anyone else that needs to turn around there. And in addition, at the end of that parking lot, two spaces could be marked off as not parking, so that if that parking lot was full, which I understand happens quite often on holiday weekends and regular weekends, that you could still turn around easily. There was a suggestion of maybe putting a full turnaround there, and we did look at that, but in terms of the space that's available, it didn't really seem like that possible to do. So, this was the alternative solution we came up with. We also separated the courtyard entrance from that pedestrian walk, kept it as minimal as possible, and added screening there, so that when you're driving in on the entry road, you're not looking at the courtyard building. It's got a curb in it, and kind of would be able to tuck the trucks in behind there. Kept the hammerhead at the main house drop-off, and overall, kept the number of spaces exactly the same. That was feedback that we also got from the Parks and Recreation. Okay. Other considerations, these are items that we have still to talk about and formally say, this is definitely what we want to do, and main one being, okay, if we take the, we convert the use of the, where the preschool is now, if we were potentially going to move that to the residence, what would happen to the space that that occupies now? If that was, if that did happen, then we would have space adjacent to the carriage house, which might be nice for renting out as events, or that building could be left there for other, maybe volunteer headquarters or something else. We also had talked about, and this wasn't finalized, what the potential is for allowing bikes on a loop, like for little kids to learn how to ride. Is there a loop right around the playground that we might be allowed, they might be allowed to do so? Or if the community in general wanted to allow anyone and everyone to do that, maybe there's a loop around the ball field that's larger, that we might, might allow that to Those were the other considerations that I think we'll have the opportunity to talk about at this point. I think that might, might be it. I showed the plan on the aerial in this last slide, just so we have it for reference if you do have questions. So, that's all I have, so please let me know if you do have questions.
Well, it seems like you're pretty free to go. So, my question is, alternative sites for the dog park. The North Meadow is generally the quiet place where people have gatherings and there are, you know, catered activities and things like that, because it's away from the playground, it's away from the ball field, it's away from when they're playing soccer and things like that. Putting the dog park right next to that seems to be something that might ruin that environment, plus people would have to walk across that with their dogs, who would be getting excited as they're going into the area, because you've got the entrances right there in the meadow. Thinking about looking at the layout when we got our packets over the weekend, it would seem to be some, make some sense to actually put it where the amphitheater is. Several reasons why that might be appropriate. First off, there's a playground right there already, and so people are making noise there already. There's a ball field and athletic fields, people are making noise there. There's also a drop-off parking place, because many of the people that use a dog park, or you can use our park today to walk their dogs, or sometimes let them off-leash, drive their dogs, very few people are actually walking their dogs. And so, having a parking lot that's right next to where the car, where the dogs would get out, and go in, it would make sense to me to get into that area, which is already wood-chipped, as you pointed out, or mulch. It does have some rolling terrain, yes, but there's also rolling terrain back over here if you manage to walk around that area. So, that is, the underlading as well in the back, in fact, there is a little circular area where people are sitting today. You couldn't move it. The other reason why you might move it as well is the dog park will make some noise, and we do have neighbors that, some of them are Appleton people, some of them are, live in an adjoining community in Felton Gables, and that essentially sets the dog park a little further away from them and not up against the neighbors to the park. So, was that location looked at, and why was it mixed, because I didn't even see it on any of your alternative plans?
That's true. I think partially, I think the primary reason was that if we were going to use the stormwater management for that area, that those two wouldn't be a good mix. It could potentially be, there could potentially be space for it near the parking lot, if that was something that could be looked at. There's also a number of, that part of the park is, as I understand it, more considered an arboretum with the trees that are there specifically planted, and there was concern that any disruption to that might affect that part of the park.
I mean, the issue of sound was discussed a lot within the group, and I think the other thing was the idea of the event garden with weddings, with activities on the weekend, you know, that would be a little more disruptive to that group. You do have other kind of outdoor picnic opportunities for group events, so that was kind of what we started with.
Well, yeah, but people, people don't use the one by the playground unless they're actually using the playground. Always, if they're bringing caterers and things like that, they're almost always there. But I agree with you with regards to a wedding, but we have an event planner, and we could actually close the dog park during, during the time of a wedding.
Correct.
Which is, they're normally in the evenings on the weekend, and that may not be dog park time. But anyways, just a suggestion that something that I, you know, I'm in the park regularly, and I've looked at where perhaps you could put one in. Taking that, putting it right next there, especially when the majority of the respondents said, no changes, it just seems that would fly on the face of that, because people really like that North Meadow.
We did look at this space basically from, from here over there, and what we did like about that is this is a fairly open space, so we would have the opportunity to maybe put in a little bit of lawn. This space here didn't really have that opportunity. It's mostly all trees. Not that that would definitely rule it out, but that was one consideration. And then, this side, like Mike was talking about, is cut, was sort of off limits because of that proximity.
Yeah, I would put it right next to it, but I would put it between where the, where the walk. where the walkway is, is what I was considering. Because it's about the same size.
Yeah.
And it's right next to the ballpark. But that's, that's something, I guess, you know, from my perspective, I'd like at least it considered and and discussed and, you know, Frank and others from the Parks and Rec, I'd like you to at least take that under fire.
The other thing, I mean, that's a good alternative. I think initially, we discounted it because of proximity of the event garden, but also because we thought it would be, having to be graded more to put it down a DG surface. There were a lot more trees in there. But we'll take another look at that.
Well, so my comments were also in the line of the off-leash area, dog area, and looking at where the Knox School is now, it, this, all this plan assumes that those trailers and demanables are gone, right? That they're, because they're not shown here, potential open space in the area between perimeter from Felton.